The left.
No, it's going to the right.
It doesn't go in the circle.
I'm sorry. Sorry, it never has.
This is a right-hand thread. Want it to go that way?
I don't know which one was you.
Most threads are right-hand.
Yeah, since I think it most do except for me.
If it's a right-hand thread, it's a left-hand.
As I say, I think they're most all the same, right? Except for the bicycle, I just put together.
You have a spare one, you have a couple of your thumb on yours.
Bicycle?
Yeah.
No, I put it together, I have the bicycle. But one wheel, one pedal with, like a normal way and the other pedal with the not normal way. I'm guessing that when they're pedaling, so you don't undo the threads. Oh. Just put it together. It's all the direction. So I know you literally like, see your thumb is moving it left, but your pinkies are going right. But I've never understood what that is. Not turning it, depending which angle you're looking at, you're turning left and right at the same time. I promise I'm not crazy.
Yeah.
Yes, I did, it's Andy at the.
He's looking at you.
Putting you on the phone.
He was looking at me.
Well, like they can't hear you.
We're trying speakerphone now.
Right, even though it all of a sudden goes, you go this way.
But you would call it, right, you'd call it clockwise and counter clockwise.
I haven't seen him in middle of the school.
Right, but clockwise is right, why? Counter clockwise is what? Because it's going this way.
That's true.
And this way.
See, the thing is that's.
Denise, I think you're fighting a losing battle, right?
Usually I'm the one on the end that's like, how do we do it? What's good, I'm Ann.
Hey Dave, can I hear you still?
You there? You ain't no lucky. Fire. Yes, I. Where's Mr. Pumper? I need to talk to you.
Can I hang this up or I put it on speakerphone? You use this before.
Oh my God. How'd you get that phone? Oh. Where's the speaker button?
Now I've been forwarded to an automated voice messaging system.
Who'd get that?
Steve put it in for me, so.
Yeah, you style this now, you should be able to.
Yeah, don't look at this. I'm assuming he's trying to call us back. Hello? Yeah, hi Dave, it's Andy again, sorry, someone cut you off. But I think we've got you now.
Can you hear?
Can you hear us?
I can hear you.
All right, good. I'm gonna put you sort of towards the center and over by the chair a little more.
Great.
But we actually need a quorum in place physically to start.
I gotta put these in relief. It's a box. Okay. Is it now?
Yes, it is.
Oh.
You can't remember what you're saying, the camera and the microphones are all.
The girl Nolo discussed about the.
It usually comes from the back row too. There's microphones in the ceiling, it picks up back row up there.
Okay. Okay. Oh, that is good.
It's calling.
Nope. No?
I don't actually see his truck. Might drink out of it.
I'll do more, I'll do it.
Maybe he's spared a drink in this.
Can I do that?
Can't take him home without a quorum.
Dave's on the phone.
You need a quorum. I don't break the rules on.
Wow.
She means it all, she means it all and stuff.
Yeah, let's hope for that big, big brother watching.
He's driving fast occasionally.
He's driving home now, just making sure.
Are you on reading?
Oh, this is good.
For the Zuma.
We go grocery shops, fun, sports, coats getting better. But I did go to the grocery store this. It's like, can we come?
A couple kind of things on the grocery store.
How are you feeling? Just being just doing. So maybe I am.
No, I don't think so.
So we're gonna give today.
I'm gonna be there until the morning.
We've lost you, Dave, we just don't have a quorum here physically yet, so.
Sorry, Mr. Buzi. I mean. It might be necessary. Could maybe for the.
If you were.
I want to hear you.
I thought I saw.
Scott's. I feel another one. Hey Dave, do we lose you? Okay, well, thank you for calling back. We're waiting for Scott to be here, that's why we've been started. Okay, well, we might be coming to get you. Okay. It was terrible reception.
Um, want me to go pick him up?
I think that's, I think that's probably the best choice. Okay, Dave, Andy's coming to pick you up. Cause I need you to be here so we can have a quorum, so we can hear the lovely racetrack.
Ask me which number his house is.
Andy wants to know what number.
It's the first one on the right.
First one on the right?
Yeah.
All right.
I'm on my way.
On his way.
I got my bike.
You're running, you're running, um, on the backs of bikes, I don't like. Hey, don't not pay him money.
No, we already lost this.
I didn't know what happened. Just, we're just gonna end it. Okay. Everybody ready for Christmas? This is not the Christmas present I wanted. Did you show? I don't know, I, I'm just smiling. My son was born on his due date, and my students always joked it's because in utero he could hear me yelling at people about being late to class.
I did bring a book.
Hang on, Lauren, what are you reading? Anything good?
I, I don't know, I haven't started it yet. Some murkery mystery. I could start reading it aloud.
You don't know. Jim, can you do, uh, the racetrack stage, my beautiful respect for you from last year? If you want it, leave why, it doesn't really feel normal, and I will send it. See if we have it.
So, Dave doesn't have a ride.
Yes.
I was on school insurance.
Was it today?
Yeah.
Yeah, examples, I just want. You don't have. If you want, I can, in the back, and send you some advice.
Yeah.
No, I didn't know if that was a good deal until I realized it was a thousand dollar deposit. I thought it was, I thought it was a thousand up front.
It was not there, I mean.
Just to make sure. So the only.
So it's sort of like random numbers, I was like, no.
And then you guys gave it to people. And what you did, and you said, and then it was. Maxed out. And then it's maxed out, and they can put forward the answer, because we're being.
What was it? They do the ten years, it's on their own.
Hmm.
That's. They do it by ten year, it's, uh.
I'm so.
It becomes flipping.
Which?
Especially.
So you guys, I guess, I don't. I don't. You would change the pose, you could go right there. I'll do. Right?
Cause we're on town. Um, so we just. Well, I just came to the houses.
Going, going for it.
But it's on the side. So, they used that pipe and, and through something. To heat it up. So I. So.
I see, you know, I do wonder.
It's just rocks up.
They found all three places work.
So. And then I try and move the power, went back downstairs and.
I might never go anywhere without.
I was. I'll just shut that down.
I have some money in my pocket.
But we have.
Sometimes two or three.
Usually keep them open as the dogs go in there, and Jackson keeps us off of here. So clean that all, I want you, or someone's back door, and, and watch out.
Hello? Come on, come on. Hello? Are you sure it's the first place on the right?
Is he on Caverna?
Are you on Caverna? Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, that's where he walked to the other day.
Well, did you knock or bang or call him? What? All right, I'll call him. I think I have his cell phone number, I'll call him. The dogs, that sounds like his place, cause he has two dogs, right? Yeah. Okay. Okay. Well, I'll call him and then you bang. Two for him, yeah. Yes, well, he described the dogs, and I know those are his dogs.
That's the driveway he walked up to the other day, so.
Is that two?
Mm-hmm.
Should be on there.
Yep.
On turn left.
Do I not have his phone number here? It's right down, please, favor. Right there.
Just stick these guys in a plate, gladly, town employee, race employee to that. I've got fifteen of them. Big fix. We do that.
He's got, how many do you have, ten, fifteen of them, yeah?
You want it?
No.
Come on. Yeah.
What, do you use it two? I'm at it.
I wanted to voice now, after thing. How many people does that take?
Well, it takes at least two, apparently. But two of them are missing. The men, the men.
So I just wanna make sure you guys saw this, right?
Yes.
And it looked okay?
Yes.
So there's one I changed, three hours.
I did see that, I thought it was, it said ten, that was.
Okay, very good. And then, just the one, ring game, oh, and I changed that thing that was down here to a testing, to an October third, because you called it a practice.
That's fine, yeah.
Because you're not supposed to have practicing this, I guess?
Yeah, that's fine.
This took the place of that?
It was, it was, that was how it was labeled last year, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. And there's no, no races this day?
No.
Okay.
No, that's just a flea market.
Okay.
Let's see, it seems to be any good here to talk about.
I know.
Hey, we're here.
I'm happy, I'm happy, unhappy.
Of course he is. Well, that's, that's a good sign, right?
I was gonna say, it's, it's already six sixteen, and there's, there's, you know.
They should have been here by now.
Well, library, the, I mean, then, you know, they would have been here by now, I think.
I mean, all of them are on Saturday, I mean, it's Friday. Only a couple there on Saturday or Sunday.
Which I know was, uh, kind of one of the main concerns last year, so.
Right. Not using the whole weekend, and, yeah.
No, and, and after talking to our racers and our fans too, it's kind of seemed to be the same thing, so we just.
Oh, that's interesting.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't think, we didn't think that at all.
No, I think, I think it's just also having some people to show up and say that Friday night's work was.
Yeah.
Helpful, some feedback and stuff like that too.
Hello, welcome, that's okay. We're, um, currently not started the meeting yet.
Okay, perfect.
Cause we don't have a quorum yet. Yes, and just, yes, I need more.
See your phone?
Oh, okay, good. Yeah, he replied to you.
Okay.
So he knows.
Do you have a way to go? Are you on that?
I actually love doing that stuff.
Why they can't. Why? So, so parents don't want me, you can't buy me. Don't, cause they can buy anything.
Oh, wow, I'm excited about that.
The problem is, I can't keep Jess's, yes, and I'll, she wins all the time, she had a point seven, so I have to give that out. So I have that mom's?
Yeah, that much.
Smarter down the road. Show up, I think I'd say, wearing a funny necklace. Benny misses nice.
Mr. Chief started it.
Yeah, he's Mr. V.
Yeah.
Uh, see that, we got a big chain. You can jump six oh two, create murder. It's for sale.
I'm doing everything to eat for Florida, or no?
I don't know, do you owe me a little bit of something?
Yeah, because I don't, my dad is probably going to Florida, we can use that.
We need to make like, you ask them that to each other, will be waiting. It's somewhere near, cause it's getting. Names lost in our firms. Cause Mike's just talking.
Yeah.
Cause I can hear it anymore, I'll pass it.
Do you have a fixed machine?
They were all sad, they fixed it too. The after shower came, oh, got it running, and you gave her oil. She was on the shoulder, getting done. Well, I'm gonna go, you have to go in, or.
He's wanting, you know that.
Probably, she gets eleven hundred bucks a month. Back rent's five fifty. And stop the gun right there. And taxes can't be one hundred bucks a month.
Well, I've been, you know, I wasn't touched last year.
Your younger drinking days, how much ninety nine bananas and all that's the box. They just go ninety nine pickles. I bet, no, actually, I bet you it's like that, I don't even.
No, I don't drink either, I'm a lot. It's March. Holiday job.
I saw that, I saw that too. I couldn't believe it.
Yes.
Transfer station.
Oh, okay.
So I think it's pretty much the end of the show. Yeah.
Seven, thank you, two, two, happy drive by, I remember, and then tell me to work. This seems like you're answering to tell me. Yeah. Cause I keep asking, where you think it's going to be?
It's a decent, yes.
Hi.
And you go.
Definitely have conversations. Set my legs to serve.
Oh. I have read others in this series, so this is the first one, I just came in today on our.
Thank you, hello.
Ho, ho, ho.
I didn't have jammers?
Okay.
Dave was claiming that he was in his less formal meeting attire.
Oh, I think.
Prior to my, also.
Yeah, I was wearing jammers, and you have shoes on.
All right, so it is six twenty-three on Monday, December twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, in a great town of Lee. Call our meeting to order, start with public comment. If you have public comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address, limit comments to three minutes. Penny takers this evening. Okay, then we are going to open the, um, public hearing for the Lee USA Speedway twenty twenty-five license application. All right, do we have anything you'd like to say about the application?
Hi, uh, John Esprit, Lee USA Speedway, three eighty Caleb Highway. Um, just a couple things to highlight about this year's schedule versus last. Um, we will have the two weekend shows, uh, one at the beginning and one at the end of the year. Uh, pretty normal for the racetrack, but we are going back to the, uh, Friday night program. So the, uh, the rest of the slotted programs in between those two events will be on all Friday nights, so. Um, just kind of going back to what the racetrack always did before, and, um, that's pretty much the, uh, the basis of this year's schedule. Thank you.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Anybody have any comments about the? Lee USA Speedway application? I assume the chiefs have both flipped over and have no concerns. Okay.
Did the start time change from five to four?
Uh, would you like to come to our lovely microphone so we can record you speaking to us? It'd be fun.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
I was just wondering if the start time changed from five to four. Uh, my name's William Crowley. I live in fifty Cameron Road, in Lee.
So the, I, the times are listed here at four, is that, the actual start time, is that just when people start to arrive and get ready?
So the, the five o'clock, you want to come up?
Yeah. Sorry.
No, don't bother at all. Uh, so.
Yeah, so the five o'clock is when we start practice, that's the standard, uh, start for the track to be used. Um, four o'clock, we, uh, allow the firing of motors, just to get cars that want to start to get into the infield for technical inspection. They're not wrapping them up or anything, it's just to simply get them, uh, transported into the infield and back.
Okay. Does that answer your questions, sir?
It does. And I'd like to thanks, thank the Raceway for switching back to the, uh, the Friday night schedule. I think it definitely works out better for the town, and probably you guys too, cause you probably get a better crowd on, on Fridays. So hopefully that works out good, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And also for the sound barrier that you guys put up, cause the sound barrier's definitely helped on it.
I hope, glad it worked.
All right. Any other comments about the Speedway? Okay. I have an official motion here, I guess.
Yeah, hold on, I'm just, I'm scrolling.
Oh, I'll get there, I'll just take me a second.
When I added, remember?
Right. And I don't have it. Thank you very much. So I moved to accept the Lee USA Speedway's twenty twenty-five proposed operations schedule and grant my license accepted to the conditions imposed by Lee's racetrack ordinance. Including inspections by the building inspector, fire chief, police chief, and submission certificate of insurance to the town administrator.
Second.
Second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we officially close the hearing, thank you guys so much for coming and.
Thank you guys.
Being here.
Happy holiday.
You too. All right, so we're gonna open our first budget public hearing.
For some reason, the camera does not like touching to this. Connect automatically, public. Bear with me, I may have to run some cable. Didn't work at the ABC media. That's really strange, it worked this afternoon when I had the IT guys on the phone with me, trying to.
Always works when IT is on the phone.
It always works when it's his presence.
Of course. Sometimes you just need to.
I mean, that.
I'm working outside. What beautiful backdrop. Oh, Jesus. Nice. For like, it's very fun.
I feel so much better about doing stuff at my house. Okay, I have, um, probably just the general budget to walk through is probably the easiest.
Okay.
I also have, uh, an active spreadsheet that we can use if you want to make wholesale changes, but.
Okay.
How come I can't get that to large? Okay, what am I missing here?
Is it the button above the, yeah. Is it that one?
Single page view, oh my.
No, you don't mean like, a little page view? Four page, go ahead, hit again. Let's see if it's a trace. Fit to width? Maybe? I don't know, I'd like to get rid of that sidebar. Can you exit out of the tools thing?
Yeah, X. Next to all tools.
No, 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 left, on the left.
Yep, left, left. All tools, right there.
There you go.
Yeah, we can, that's better. Okay, uh, this has the select board column, um, blank.
Yeah.
This is the ABC budget with a couple of slight modifications. Um, I had sent an email to the board that there were a couple of different numbers there, so I went with the one that matched everything else. I don't know how you'd like to proceed, I can just scroll through this and you can comment as you see fit, or?
Um, I don't know if that's necessary. I had a couple of things, I was just curious, not that it really matters, huge amount, but, oh, these don't have line numbers. Okay, um, elections and registration for postage, I was just curious why it was the only one that went up when everything went down? Because I assumed it all went down because there's fewer elections, but why would we need to mail more things?
I am not entirely sure.
I know it's only twenty-five dollars, I was just curious about the inconsistency. Okay, so that was my first question.
Post-creed on elections, I can talk with the supervisors, we find out?
I just heard that was forgotten. Um, I highlighted things in colors.
And, um, I'll put these on the website and online as well, uh, marked in draft, but put them out so people can review them.
Under government building maintenance, we did part-time, which means line one hundred twenty-seven. Um, there is that decrease. Do we know why that went up? Were we, were we doing fewer hours of part-time maintenance?
Uh, yes, and I think we're using just Jeff Lopierre now, uh, in that position, and it was at a lower rate than, um, the prior employee.
Okay, and then the electric for the transfer station? What is, oh, it was like, it was like literally right near where you were just at. I think it's TS right there?
Yeah.
Why is that, what is going on here? Why is it three forty-eight and then six thousand and fifty-five?
Saying, yeah, I would say the money got allocated, uh, to an incorrect line is the most likely explanation.
Okay.
Um, it probably has something to do with the complications of the offsetting credits that we get on the electrical bill from the, uh, solar array.
Okay. So. Looking at that, I'm like, that's something not logical.
Talk with Hope about that.
Um.
It's killing me because Denise and I found like eight other anomalies and I thought we didn't.
No, I'm fine, I made a column to look at differences, that's what I did today. Um, I know we talked about the fire overtime. And I think that the, my understanding was that it was being used a lot more because there was someone who was injured. Are we still thinking that we're gonna need all that extra overtime? Would you like to speak to that? You happen to be here, sir, thank you. Oh, I meant, you're lovely son, by the way, camp high.
Oh, yes, I saw you at the band concert. Anyways, um, I'm hoping that we don't have to use it, I'm just setting it up so that if we have a firefighter, multiple firefighters out for like three months, we can cover that, and that's kind of what happened. We've already overspent that line this year.
Okay.
Um, we had somebody out for two months, and then we had somebody out for two weeks, sick. So, in our line of work, I've already had a shoulder injury and had surgery, and I was out for a couple, uh, almost two months, I think. So for that, where we're at right now, and having them out, I'm just looking forward to the future, and hopefully we can have it covered. We're trying to do the one-for-one, so if we have a lieutenant out, we're trying to have a lieutenant cover that shift.
Okay, thank you guys, I'm just, just trying to see where all the differences are and make sure I understand.
We had a similar thing happen, uh, in the police department budget.
Yeah.
This year as well.
Okay, and then I, I think I briefly asked you about paving earlier. Obviously, I think that, um, for me, it's two eighty-six. That, I don't know if that helps. Yeah, so that jumped a lot, so I guess I would just ask you to go speak with Steve and see if we can maybe move out our roads, see if we can stretch, stretch them a little bit more, and what that can do to kind of help there.
I know Selecton Bubbe had also expressed similar. Someone's outside of the meeting.
Um, and did we ever get anything from the nation's two hundred and fiftieth about how they were gonna spend the money they wanted? Yes.
We did.
Well, do we, it's like, other than Upy Spirit said, I wanna get people for a parade. But I feel like that's the only thing we saw.
I don't know how specific the information is, but we did get some backup.
Broke it out a little bit, yeah.
Yeah, I can certainly.
No, I'm sure it's in my email, I just, I don't remember seeing them, and I just wanted to make sure I understood it, it's us.
I'll let me make sure it didn't just come to myself.
Okay. Um, I think that was everything. Were you, it was, I think we talked last, I think it was last meeting, about, um, the financial planning tool and checking back in about, for example, the fire truck and whether it had everything, well, that number still is very accurate, or whether or not it was a.
I did not have much to do with that, but Mr. Tappin and the fire chief, uh, have gone back and forth and included me on those emails, and I certainly won't endeavor to speak for either of them, but I think that their findings, at least by my interpretation, were that that number probably needs to stay where it is, but.
Okay.
I reached out to one of our dealers, and we purchased trucks from him and asked him to kind of give me an approximate number, um, looking at two years from now. He agreed with the number that we have in the plan. I also spoke to a neighboring department, because they just purchased a new truck to kind of get what they had for an insight, and they said the same thing.
Okay.
Um, myself and John have looked at a lot of different websites, um, the problem with a fire truck and how custom it can be with anything down to the compartment size and the pump size and all that. We just can't get a definitive number on a price for right now, plus with inflation rate for the next few years, they just don't know. I mean, the dealers don't even know how much things are gonna go up. Um, we might have a better number maybe in like January, because that's when most of the increases pop up for that stuff.
Okay.
We've also looked at some websites that we know where towns have approved fire trucks to kind of see what's in the area, and there's nothing really even close to what we're looking for right now.
Okay, thank you. Just trying to find all the numbers. Hope you don't, no, it's not, um.
Yeah.
Personal, anyway, and in the library request, a hundred thousand for, is it under library maintenance? Is that what transfer line it would be under? Because mine's not updated in my spreadsheet.
Um.
Mine's all the way at the bottom. Uh, for the, sorry, for the, um, capital reserve fund. Is that on this page?
I, no, I actually.
So, this one?
Yeah, these. I don't believe the library was included in this because we hadn't received their requests prior to the ABC putting together their budget, but I can switch to the actual warrant.
Uh-huh.
Which we updated with everybody, I believe. And I'll use Denise's version because it looks better than mine.
What was the library in fiscal year twenty-five?
It was two hundred thousand, but it didn't end up as a capital reserve.
Okay, because you put it in as the.
I find it went directly to their project. See if I can find the, uh.
Oh, apologies. Mr. Tappin, of course.
John Tappin, one eighty-seven Steppenstone's Road, uh, you just mentioned it. In nineteen ninety-eight, the Library Capital Reserve Fund was created for the purpose of, quote, "capital improvements to the library." At the town meeting on March thirteenth, two thousand and two, Article eighteen was moved and seconded to see if the town will vote to change the name of the Library Maintenance Fund to the Library Capital Reserve Fund to be used for capital improvements to the library. The town administrator then explained that this fund is already called the Library Capital Reserve Fund, so Article eighteen was defeated. The town meeting on March tenth, two thousand and ten, Article nineteen was moved and seconded to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate the sum of sixty thousand dollars to be added to the Library Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund established in nineteen ninety-eight. After some discussion on the merits, Dick Wellington questioned the use of the word "maintenance." The library director stated that when the original warrant article was voted on in nineteen ninety-eight, the fund was called Library Capital Reserve Fund. The article was amended to remove the word "maintenance," and that was adopted as amended. I've spoken many times about the correct naming of the trust and reserve funds, yet on page twelve, which you just pointed to, of the budget worksheet attached to the agenda, account zero one, four nine one five one, zero zero zero, zero nine, is listed as library maintenance. There is no fund for library maintenance. The fund lists this Library Capital Reserve Fund created for the purpose of capital improvements to the library. How has this error persisted in the town's bookkeeping for more than two decades?
I.
Well, I can take responsibility for the last three years. It's an easy enough change in the, uh, new budget software, so I can certainly change that.
And while we're looking at page twelve, there's another error to be corrected. For fiscal year twenty twenty-five, the total of the transfers to capital reserve funds was seven hundred and five thousand, as shown. But the total listed for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, five hundred and fifty-five thousand, is incorrect because the capital reserve fund is missing from the list. In twenty twenty-four, there was a transfer of two hundred thousand to the Lee Library Building Capital Reserve Fund, which isn't on the list. With this fund included, the fiscal year twenty twenty-four total to reserve funds is seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, the correct number. And when you include the, uh, trust funds, the total was seven hundred and seventy-five thousand. So, there's another mistake to correct.
This is the actual warrant and the actual language that we have right now for the library. This is obviously a draft copy of the warrant, but that was how I.
Um, and you can make sure those two funds are.
Yeah. Yep, that's.
The additional fund and the name of that fund. Okay.
Um, I can give a backup, just, uh. This is what we have for warrant articles so far, obviously, there's still some time for, um, petition warrant articles to come forward, or if other people want to come to the board directly from departments within the town, but we've got the positions that are open. Um, we're going to have, uh, two warrant articles from, uh, zoning dealing with accessory dwelling units and trying to determine whether the town wants to loosen those regulations.
Okay.
Um, that's a direct result of, uh, the housing grant and the housing study, uh, that the town did over the course of the past year. Article four is, uh, the draft budget as it sits now, um, with the proposed default. Article five, this was a result of the ABC, the ABC made a substantial increase, um, to the amount to be deposited in the Fire Equipment Capital Reserve Fund.
Okay, so the numbers you have here in these are the ABC numbers.
They are, because the board has not actually voted on any part of the budget yet. The Lee Library trustees, uh, told me that they would be looking for a one hundred thousand dollar deposit into the capital reserve fund. The ABC recommended a hundred thousand for the town buildings' capital reserve fund. All right, as they did for the highway department road and bridge improvement funds. Ninety thousand for the transfer station equipment capital reserve fund. Fifty thousand for the highway equipment capital reserve fund. And, and one of the things I will do for the, um, budget to voter information packet that goes out is put, um, I always use John's report that shows the actual, um, amounts in each capital reserve fund. So we've got thirty-five thousand for the solar energy system capital reserve fund. Twenty-five thousand for our ponds and cisterns. Twenty thousand for the internal service expendable trust fund for accrued benefits, um, and we do have a couple of senior employees planning on retiring, as far as I know. Um, this year still, this coming year. Fifteen thousand for the cemetery fencing capital reserve fund, you may recall, uh, Mr. Hoyt and the trustees, uh, have had some difficulty tracking down someone to give them a hard and fast number and actually commit to doing the work, but they are still hopeful. Um, ten thousand dollars for the revaluation capital reserve fund, we've got a revale coming up. 20,000 for the contingency fund. That's, for lack of a better reason, apparently longstanding tradition to use 20,000 for the contingency fund.
All right.
And then yeah, we had two specific housekeeping warrant articles that were recommended by DRA. Everybody that I spoke with and Lee assumed that Lee had long since passed 3195 and 4114A. We had not. You may recall that we had some difficulty with an easement on a trail by our group earlier in the year and we thought we were going to take care of it smoothly and easily, but it turned out that because we hadn't passed, I believe it was 4114A, we were not able to act on that. So it was, the Department of Revenue Administration had suggested that we include those. And went back to, I believe it was 1952, on their historical look back to assure me that they hadn't been passed. That's what we've got right now for warrants.
Any commentary from the audience? I don't know much more we can do without Mr. Bugby or that information. Do you have anything else to present on this tonight?
As I've said, if the board is going to be the first pass, we will make this public, make known that it's not the final budget or the final warrant at this stage, but. It is, but I mean, publicize it more.
Publicize it in what way?
Well, we might put it on the website under budget information.
Well, I feel somewhat that as long as it has draft written all over it since we're clearly not done with it. I don't want to.
Unless the board, the M&Ms, objects, I think, I think it will be a good idea. I can put it under my page or the budget.
Yeah, no, I think it should be out there. It's public information. I just Mr. Tappin.
John Tappin, 187 Stepping Stones Road. In the past, when draft warrant articles were listed or published, that line that says, "Select Board recommends", it always had both recommend slash does not recommend because at that point it's a draft and the select board has not actually voted on them.
No, I can surely change that.
Yes, I agree with Mr. Tappin. Since they have not voted.
All right, well, I will mark these up accordingly. I've got some budget changes to make here. Do that as well and get those out to you. I should be able to do that tomorrow, so you'll have them in time for Christmas Eve.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Wait a second, I'm sorry, you're going to do it tomorrow? Tomorrow is Christmas Eve. Please don't bother. Okay.
One thing I would comment on, I put a projected tax rate on here. A couple of people have looked at it and have said that doesn't seem quite high enough. One of the things that happened this year was our, we had a, not huge, but we had a significant revenue increase. And our revenue last year prior was 2.1 million. We went to 2.5 million this year. I expect that we're going to stay in that vicinity because of some of the grants that we're online to receive. Already those are counted as revenue. We have several hundred thousand dollars coming in as a result of the Clean Energy Grant and some other things that are going to keep that fairly significant.
I don't know that the revenue though factors into the tax impact. Right? Like if you vote for this article or don't vote for it, it's a difference in the thing without regarding this in the revenue.
When you do the rate impact equation, you do consider your estimated revenue on the DRA form. I can, I'll send you the formula that I'm using this year.
And you're getting that from DRA?
I am not. I'm getting that from municipal, municipal resources incorporated. I worked with Christian Piersall, who actually included it in the budget rating software.
I can see that for the overall budget, but not for the warrant articles. Okay. All right, so we'll check those. All right, so fix that stuff, write draft all over it and then we'll get that information. All right, so do we need to continue the budget hearing? Is that the line we have to do, isn't it? So I make a motion to continue the budget hearing until? Till the next. Until January 6th, 2025. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Did you want to leave that on? Do you have the wage classification and pay scale? Do you want to?
I can put those up.
I mean, might as well, since everybody knows what we're talking about. Since you're already plugged in here.
I don't know that I do have the.
It's attached to the agenda, the very least.
Yeah, I can, well. Given that you have not being live, I can't go pick that up.
Because you're not live?
We're not.
Well, you may not live.
I am not remoted into, typically when I set this up, I would be remoted into my desktop in the office.
Oh, I just think if you go to lenh.org and click on the agenda, you could open it.
Yeah, I was just checking to see if I copied these as. Wage calculator, personnel budget, budget. I did not, so we can try that. Okay. Where is my tool folder on this one? Okay. Essentially, what I did was after a discussion with board members about wage classification and wage step increase, I went back to the municipal resources wage classification and wage scale study that the town paid close to $9,000 for, as I recall, right when I came on. And it took effect in 2021. No action was taken using it. It was a fairly significant report with positions assigned to different wage classifications and they'd also done a salary survey of, I believe, nine or 10 communities that they felt were similar to Lee with salary range split throughout the table. So we paid for it. It's been two or three years. I went back to the classification, updated a couple of things, small things, like we no longer have a finance director, we have a bookkeeper, that type of change. And went through the classifications. I took a look at the wage table that I presented. I basically cost of living adjusted the original wage table that they had given us and compared it to other communities who had similar studies done by MRI at just about exactly the same time, but also put theirs into play and updated them as recently as this past August 1st. So that's where those numbers came from. As you look at that table, that's 9% between grades with a 2.5 between steps. The MRI recommendation was to make those annual steps. So that's how I left it. I did not put any specific schematic in here, you know, with year skipping or.
How does this table compare to the current? Like, let's pick on Denise because she's here. If we put, figured out where Denise was in this table, how does that number compare to her current salary? In general, you know what I mean? Like, pick a random percent. Sorry, Denise, she's looking at you. So 13.
Would be a 13.
Yeah.
And how many years have you been here, Denise?
1 million.
Only 11?
Okay.
13 and 11.
So I guess my question is, how does this data correlate to our current?
Well, in that particular situation, for the others that we looked at, they were fairly close to where people were. In this situation, that is considerably higher than where that employee is.
Okay, so I guess that would be the next thing I'd want to know, like how, what, I, first I don't want to give anybody a pay decrease. So let's make, can we, can we figure out? I have no problem with what you have set up in any way, shape or form. I think it's great. I want to know where every employee is on this table, what their current salary is and what this table says their salary should be. And then we need to push that together.
I can certainly do that. Just wanted to give the.
Yeah, no, I think, I mean, I don't, I don't have a, I don't in general have an issue with these numbers. I don't, I mean, they're comparable. But I'd want to know how that compares to current.
Yeah, I think one of the other things you need to look at are people that are at the end of the the table and.
It's the assumption it just increases by 2.5%. Chief, did you have a comment?
I guess my only thing to think about is, like, I'm obviously looking at this for myself. And is it in the position for the years or is it how long you've been here for the town? Cause some of us, like, I was a firefighter, but I've been chief for 10 years, but I've been here for 20, so I guess that was a question that I, how the board would look at them.
Yep.
And I'll, but you know, for me, just in my position, that's like 10,000 off.
Too high, too low?
Too low. That, this is higher than what I make.
Okay, so we've, yeah, we've got a kind of, then were you counting yourself at like?
If I look at just, I've been chief, I've been chief for 10 years. So I'm a grade 15. If you do step 10, that's way more than what I actually make.
Mr. Tappin?
John Tappin, 187 Stepping Stones. Has been more than four decades since I was in the Army. But I wondered why a police corporal is a grade above a sergeant. Is that correct?
That was what I, I'm not sure why, but that was what I pulled from the report that we paid for, so. And it matched two surrounding towns, but I can certainly look into that.
I do not know. Can we ask the chief of police to make sure that those are in logical order? Whatever that order may be. Cause I was never in the Army and I don't know.
Sergeant outranks a corporal. A sergeant, a sergeant does not rank a corporal, but a sergeant, a corporal with more years can make more money than a sergeant can.
Isn't, so, isn't, so we think, okay. Let's figure that out.
Rank are two separate things. Pay and rank steps, as you'd say, are two separate things.
And on Chief Nemitz's table that the fire department is using right now, that rank is included in that specifically. Okay, no, I can make these additions.
Google says sergeant's higher. I mean, so, yeah, it's just double check.
Sir, sir, sergeant is one more higher than corporal.
Yeah. Okay.
So this is what we have in place right now for the fire department. And in talking with the chief, and I had touched on this sort of briefly with the board previously, some of the things that the chief is interested in implementing are changing the wage scale steps, moving to six years as from 10, which we're in 10 right now. He's also interested in longevity pay for senior members. This is pretty common practice in fire departments. Particularly if you have a lot of senior people that are maxed out in their wage and step. It's a good incentive to keep people. I listed the positions from the last payroll and gave you their hourly so you can get a feel for what the pay rate is right now. This, this flexes some because we have a large part-time roster that the department draws from. So the payroll is not necessarily the same folks every payroll depending on the part timers that step up.
Okay, so the chief would like it to be 16% in six years instead of 10. And then after six years, it's just this longevity? But what's the longevity for the one in five years? Is that not included in the steps?
Correct. So I watched the last meeting. You're correct that the step program is almost like a longevity. For the firefighters and our retirement, it's better to get a higher amount faster because it's our best five years when we retire. So in years ago, or two years ago, when I went to the board, I actually had COVID the night that that, this was all discussed. I had multiple different plans on how to do the steps. And they kind of just went with the one we ended up with, which is okay, but talking with the membership, they would like it to be cut shorter. So the, like Andy was saying, the percentage pretty much is the same. It's the 16% at all the years. But we've already hit max, like it doesn't just keep going after step 10, 11, 12. It's done at step 10 for us. So I was looking at longevity pay and looked at a couple of contracts in the area. And a lot of departments do do some sort of longevity pay. So like Peter Hoyt's been on the department for 42 years or something like that. He's not going to get any more step. So it's just another way of the membership getting an increase at some point.
Is this year one after six years or year one, like literally just one year?
So that's after they complete one year, 25 cents. After they complete year five, so five total years, they get 50 cents per hour.
So what's the difference between year one and going up the step? I just make sure I understand.
So, yep, if they're still within the step program, they would get both.
Okay.
But we're at a point where we have a lot of members that aren't even in the step program because they've been here so long, which is a.
Which is the bottom two of those things. I was just curious about the first two of those lines. Go back up, Andy. One page, like these, these two is the ones I was, I was.
Correct.
These are only, these are still in the step program? Year one and year five?
Yes.
Okay, so they would get both?
Yeah.
Okay. It's better to have it written up separately than just including it in that year, like the one I.
Everything I've, well, because like if I was in the step program, I'm not in the step program because I've been here for 20 years, so I would like to have it separate because there are, there are people that aren't in the step program.
So do you ever, does step equate to years here or step equate to something else?
Years here.
Okay.
And fire and police department information, it's fairly easy to find standardized practice in other departments because of collective bargaining. There's a lot of.
Yeah, I looked at Durham, Dover, Rye. I looked at a bunch of different departments. They all do it differently. Well, they all had longevity pay and I was kind of shocked because I haven't really heard longevity pay until recently, but like the city of Dover's been doing it since 1998. And it's been in their contract since then. So it's just some people do bonuses, some people do it hourly. But that rate is about the normal that all the departments have. And for me, I'd rather fight for hourly because it goes towards their actual pay instead of just getting a one, some bonus.
Questions, Mr. Tappin? I don't have any concerns about this other than I'm pretty sure there's a typo. You don't want it to be a quarter of a cent per hour.
Yep, that's, that was my mistake, not.
Who can I mock for that? You get one quarter of a penny extra per hour. I was making sure to happen to point it out, actually. I already probably saw that. You just fixed that. And then, I mean, I have no concerns about that. Probably should wait for Mr. Bugby to weigh in his two cents. You just fix that. And then, I mean, I have no concerns about the pledge away from Mr. Bugby to weigh in as two cents or a quarter of a penny. But if that's, if that's a better, that would be the preference. I guess I don't really have a concern about that.
Yeah, I just wanted to... I'm missing the second page on this. I had included the math... Yeah, I apologize. I didn't realize this is half of the COLA recommendation. But I can give you the rundown. It essentially uses four indices to look at COLA. Changed the language so that it was, I think, more amenable to some of the comments the Board had made in the first one. And up at the back of this... Well, I don't actually have the, right now, the C P I is running about 2.8 if you take the four indices that I included in there. And those four indices that I used were the C P I New England, the C P I Northeast October, the C P I Boston-Cambridge-Newton Index, which includes Stratford and Rockingham County, New Hampshire, and the Social Security COLA, and averaged those. The first two were by month, the COLA's annually, and the Boston-Cambridge-Newton is quarterly, but it gives you a pretty accurate picture across the board. And the other items I had were, we had two payment in lieu of vacation exception requests. One was from Mr. Bullock and one was from Mr. Lyons, both from the Highway Department, who are maxed out on vacation time and don't believe that they are going to have the ability to utilize that given their positions.
Okay. I do have a question because there's this, like, part in blue that says, as of the date that this request has reached 10 years of service, but the math isn't mathing there?
Neither one of these employees have reached 10 years of service. They are putting the request into the Board anyway because the Board has made exceptions in the not that distant past, including ones for Mr. Bullock previously, so. They are aware that the Board has made exceptions.
It wasn't an exception. There was no vote. It was, it wasn't noticed, Mr. Bullock, that it was, he was not hired by 2017.
There's two things at play here. According to personnel policy, you need to be hired by 2017, and you need to have 10 years of service. And I think there was some discussion about this, and Denise has got the minutes, and no one paid much attention to the 2017 date. It was seen as making an exception to the 10 years of service.
Okay. I think we probably need to revisit that personnel policy because it seems that there's a lot of exceptions being made to it. So we all need to either reconfirm it or we need to change it.
I think that would be a wise move.
I think in the meantime, since we have made exceptions, then I would, yes.
We can move this to the next meeting if you want.
Opinions about making an exception to the rule? No opinion. I just want to make sure we're being fair to everybody, that there aren't people who are following the rule that aren't being... Is there anybody else who's maxed out who hasn't come to us for the money?
We've had a police officer.
Who didn't come or who did come?
Did not come. Tom presented the request.
But we gave it, like, so he didn't have the 10 years.
The 10 years you got, the Board has granted, given an exception to the 10-year part. The exception to the 2017 part has not been given.
Right, the police officer in question, I believe, was hired in 2016, so he was okay.
He was okay as far as that's concerned. If you're, if the Board wants to give it back to the employees, give this benefit back to the employees, then we can redo that section of the personnel policy to indicate that.
Are there other employees who have lost time because of this policy?
Over the years?
Oh, yes.
And this was, we found the minutes in 2017. The Board had decided that they wanted to do away with the policy, so they said, well, grandfather everyone, hire 2017 and before and do away with it going forward.
Okay. Let's move these two then to next meeting, and let's revisit that policy when more of us are here.
Yeah, we've, we've got the backup and the actual policy.
Okay.
Can put that in the agenda for you to review.
Okay, anything else? Chief, are you here for anything else?
Nope.
Okay, so now if you had anything?
I have nothing else at this point. The one thing I will mention under miscellaneous, I will talk with our present landlord. I noticed a large commercial real estate sign went up in front of our building today, so...
For our building?
I'm not 100% sure.
Okay, because we have a lease for another
We do have a lease with options for years, but it did not specify which portion of the property was for sale.
Okay, I do have a question. One of the poll things that was in the consent agenda, I'm sorry, are you all done with this line?
Yes.
I just moved on. The consent agenda, the poll...
License application.
License application. It has a lot of blanks in it that don't seem to be filled in. I wasn't sure if they were necessary.
Does that have Steve's signature on it?
Boys, the chair, and then the town clerk.
Yeah, is it from the, from public service, yeah.
All right, if you look at it, like, it just, there's, there's like, the maximum and high of the structure shall be blank and blank. Kind of should be very to death blank.
No, we can certainly take this back to them.
All right, it just seems like there was a lot of things, meaning I wasn't sure if they were necessary.
I, typically, I'd like to get the DPW Director to sign off on those two, just because of potential location problems.
Okay, so let's remove those lines from the consent agenda.
Yeah, it was just duplicate, I guess.
Okay. Okay, so any other questions about the consent agenda? No? Okay, and I'm going to accept the consent agenda with removal of the poll license application.
Second.
All is in favor? Aye.
Both favor, you and I? All right, now I'm going to unhook the camera.
Okay.
I'm going to try the control one more time. Press any other button.
Does it like when you press it twice? Very fast.
Does this seem to like anything?
Okay, great.
Just do, let's see, right there.
Have we considered buying a stool for this one?
I have a small ladder. I can stand on this. My more immediate response is going to be to get Mr. Gagnon to put his head in the ceiling and figure out why the remote isn't working.
Under other, yeah. I think also, I was thinking, Andy, that it would be nice now that the offer money is kind of done
Yep.
to publish something showing how it's been all over.
What are we spending?
Yeah, make sure everybody knows what we were able to do with it.
Yep.
That we might not necessarily be able to do. All right, any old business updates?
I have nothing at this time, no.
Need this? Need for non-public?
No.
No? Okay, then I need to adjourn. All is in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Kill the camera.
Okay, I apologize. Oh, okay. Saw your giant stickies. Sorry, I like...